So we'll take his as read and the mayor will ask David to put his question.
So they've already got macarons, but they haven't got...
Yes, and they've got yours as well, yeah, yeah.
All of them.
Yeah, yeah.
But he's gonna read it again.
Or two. You can read it if you want.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want to read it instead of reading it.
Yeah. We don't need to read macarons, no. Don't read macarons.
Uh, no, 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 it's, it's taken as read already.
Yeah.
The members have had it since this morning.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, thank you.
He didn't introduce himself.
Just give him.
It's a pity. Says, uh, they have read it and the houses have been given it this morning. They are aware of it. And that was really important. Because we don't speak, because we can't see. Is this a problem? Represent us. Does we do it? I don't know. He must be, because he's in the middle of saying. We have to start?
Good evening, members of the council and members of the public, and welcome to this meeting. Please remain standing while my chaplain, the Reverend Terry Brown, says prayers.
God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guard us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humility and the dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in the goodness and love. Amen.
Amen. Please take your seats. Can you do it a bit more, sorry? That's it. Thank you. Do I have to sign those? I'd like to remind everybody that the meeting is being recorded and is streamed live on our website. I've also been asked at meetings of the council to make a standard evacuation announcement. Please note that in the case of an emergency, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the council chamber at once, taking your personal belongings with you. Follow the green far exit to leave the civic centre onto Duke Street via the stairs, which are located near to the end of the corridor adjoining this chamber. Lifts should not be used. Please gather by the war memorial immediately outside the civic centre. And if and when it is safe to return to the building, an announcement will be made. You should not return to the building until told it is safe to do so. I've been advised that it's unlikely that we will get a far bill, and if we do, then I would imagine it's real. Just bear that in mind. Okay, agenda item number one, apologies for absence. I've received apologies from absence for this meeting from councillors Ayers, Bracken, Dudley, Gulliver, Hughes, Lager, Raven, Thorpaps, Tron, Whitehead and Young. Are there any others to report? No, I'll take that as okay. Okay, mayor's announcements, item agenda two. A charity called Remembrance for Rebecca Rana has asked all local authorities to mark the twenty-seventh anniversary of the Sabrina massacre. I have agreed that an appropriate way for this council to do what would be to observe a minute's silence at this meeting to remember the victims and all of the survivors of that terrible event. I therefore invite you to stand in remembrance. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Thank you. Couple of mem- uh, announcements to be made, please. The first one is a thank you from me as the mayor. Councillor Anne and Chris Davidson very kindly raised some money for the mayor's charities with some recent events, and I'd just like to personally thank them for doing that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I just mention that that was the Lib Dem group collectively, we just organised the payment.
Okay, I didn't know that, so thank you to everybody. Thank you very much. Talking of charities, can I just remind everybody that their phone is switched either to silent or turned off, please? And just to sharpen your mind, can I suggest that if any of the phones go off for any of our main council meetings or any other main meetings, a contribution of ten pounds will be made to the mayor's charities? Thank you. I'm not the first to do that, I understand. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number three, declarations of interest. Members will be aware of the need to declare any interest they have in the business at this meeting, either now or when we come to the item. So does anybody wish to declare any interest at this point? Good. Item number four, minutes. The minutes of the meeting on the twenty-second of March and the eighteenth of May have been distributed. Are you happy to accept them as a correct record? Thank you. In that case, the minutes are approved. I'll now quickly sign them all. Thank you. Item number five, public questions. Right, item five is public questions. Any member of the public, after giving their name and address, may ask a question on which the council has powers or duty or which affects the city. Questions must not exceed two minutes, and the total period allowed for question time under the council's rules of procedure is thirty minutes. I believe we have two questions, both of which have been sent to, to me. The person who asked the first question unfortunately is unable to be here, but we will take it as read, and the second question will be put by David Ch- uh, Chambers. Both questions are the same subject, so I invite David Chambers to come to the pho- uh, to the phone, sorry, to the microphone and state your question, please, Mr. Chambers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Whilst the residents of Chislet Row of Walton Wold welcome the decision to modernise the play equipment in the play area, we feel strongly that the proposed changes in size, location and age range is too much for the level of consultation we have been offered. The present area comprises six items of apparatus for up to twelve-year-olds and a large fenced area much used for family ball games. The proposals are too much, are for much more equipment, eliminating the kickabout area and so merging the areas used by the many local dog walkers and children playing ball. Since the start of twenty twenty-two, the residents were told that there would be a consultation. This amounted to a Facebook page with three equipment layouts which is published recently. The relocation, increase of the equipment and the age range had all been decided with with no input from the residents who suffer from antisocial behaviour or from local users. Is this a consultation? We now ask for reassurance from this council that the residents' concerns about the relocation, expansion, age range and increased antisocial behaviour which have been submitted to its chief officers and the parks department, together with a petition signed by at least eighty of the local electorate, will be considered and that the consultation thus far will be discounted and replaced with meaningful engagement with residents and users alike, thus to ensure the best outcomes for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chambers. I believe councillor Moore is going to respond to both of those questions.
I'm happy to do that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chambers, for taking the time to attend and raise these matters in this public forum this evening. As cabinet member for greener and safer Chelmsford, several of the areas you've referenced fall within my portfolio: parks and green spaces, health and wellbeing, public health and protection services and community safety, and I'm very happy to respond to you. I would like to start by setting some context for the improvements to Chislet Row play area, and I'll then move on to address your concerns around size, location, age range and the consultation process. The refurbishment of the existing equipped play area at Chislet Row is one part of an ongoing programme of works originally set out in this council's playground development plan, and it was agreed at cabinet on the tenth of July, twenty twelve. The plan sets out the policy and the standards for provision of equipped play areas, together with an improvement plan which involves the rationalisation, refurbishment and, in some cases, the installation of entirely new equipped play areas. This is in order that the spatial catchment and quality standards set out in that policy can as far as possible be met. This plan applies across the whole of the city council's area. Ten years on, the council is now around two-thirds of the way through this extensive programme, and we will see a number of play areas refurbished each year as resources allow. You mention in your letter that the present area comprises six items of apparatus for up to twelves and a large fenced area much used for family ball games. The proposals are for much more equipment, eliminating the kickabout area and so merging the many local dog walkers and children playing ball. The equipped play area at Chislet Row, Mr. Chambers, is designated as a neighbourhood play area and it serves the Waterson Vale catchment as a whole. This play area is below standard. The council has the opportunity now to introduce a much wider range of equipment to inspire imagination and play for children of up to the age of twelve years. The work to Chislet Row play area involves replacing the equipment in a slightly different location, but still within the existing fenced-off play area. You'll see new access path and gates. And a safety surface to modern-day standards made of recycled rubber will be installed beneath all of the play equipment. This will be a continuous surface rather than islands of equipment, as is the case now, and the fenced-off area forms part of the designated equipped play area. It's really unsuitable for kickabouts due to the risk of a ball inadvertently hitting a child using the play equipment. However, there is plenty of room for ball games outside the equipped play area. This is one of many shared open spaces we're blessed to have in Chelmsford. And of course, it's important to be mindful of other park users and tailor our activities accordingly. For instance, when the parks are busy, people are picnicking or dogs are run off lead. In terms of the consultation, of course, I can offer you reassurance. All feedback from all forms of engagement will be taken into account when proposals are reviewed, including the petitions submitted. They are all valid and allow people to express their views and make comments. Although it does need to be acknowledged that this is a local issue, so feedback received from people living outside the area will be given less weight and consideration. The city council intends to proceed with the replacement of the play equipment within the existing play area. But just to reiterate, this was not a consultation on whether a play area should be provided in this location, but an opportunity to comment and help shape the proposals. Following the consultation, some adjustments to the design will be made, taking into account comments received, in particular, confirming that the play area is for children up to twelve years and site signage will reflect this, that the colour scheme will be simplified and more natural colours selected, and that any seating will be backless, located adjacent to the safety surfacing and the play equipment and away from the northern part, that is, away from Chislet Row of the play space as much as is practical. The layout, which was based on option A, which was by far and away the most popular choice, will also be rotated so that the aerial runway located will be located further away from houses in Chislet Row. And the replacement play equipment will be located within the existing fenced-off play space, so it will not impede dog walking outside of that fenced-off area or the use of our larger open space at Chislet Row for kickabout and informal recreation. The area is currently maintained as close-mown grass, which does have limited biodiversity value. It's essentially a desert, so there is also an opportunity here to increase local biodiversity in the area, which I would warmly welcome. If I may, Mr. Mayor, can I just respond to the first question
Indeed, you can.
in the absence of macaron de leche? Thank you. I received an email, um, which I will briefly read to you, it is short. How would the decision-maker at the council feel if such a redevelopment was thrust in his or her own backyard without a formal consultation process and knowing that the current bad situation of ongoing antisocial problems, vandalism and drug use issues would exacerbate and make the situation even worse for its long-suffering residents? I consulted our community safety team and the community policing team in turn on this issue. There is no evidence to suggest that slightly repositioning the play area will have any impact on the incidences of antisocial behaviour that may occasionally occur in the area, as they sadly do elsewhere in Chelmsford. The feedback that we have is that any recent incidents may be related to students from Chelmsford College gathering on the far side of the open space, which they are entitled to do, but not if antisocial behaviour results. And I would urge people to please report ASB, um, not least for the safety of the young people involved in that, which you can do online to the council, by phone or by reporting to your local councillors. It's very important that we keep a log of this. And Spencer Clark, our community protection officer, has advised that this area is on the community policing team's patrol route as a result of reported ASB. If such behaviour occurs, it's rarely because the presence of an equipped play area. And the city council, through liaison with the community policing team and its own public protection officers, will investigate that behaviour and apply appropriate action plans to tackle such potential occurrences. We also liaise with schools and the college as part of that wraparound community safety action. I have to say that from experience in other similar locations, the replacement and refurbishment of our parks and open space facilities, such as this equipped play area, often helps to mitigate ASB because more people are there more often to enjoy all the park has to offer. This tends to displace antisocial behaviour. I did have a further late submission, Mr. Mayor, from a councillor representing the ward.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's, it's possible to just refer to two key points?
If you could, because obviously the rest of the house hasn't had a chance to read that email or letter, whatever.
If we, if you prefer that we take this out of the chamber and I can respond to the councillor in question so he can report to residents, that's absolutely fine.
That's fine.
Thank you very much indeed, and thank you once again for attending the meeting.
Thank you. If there be no more questions, we'll move on to the next business. Cabinet question time. At the time of the deadline of noon on Monday, no questions have been submitted for cabinet members, so we'll move straight on to item seven. Agenda item seven, reports from the cabinet member for Fera Chelmsford. Seven point one, Treasury Management Outturn. The next three reports are from the cabinet on the twelfth of July and will be introduced by councillor Davidson. A separate report under each item seven, which sets out the recommendations to the cabinet on those items, was sent to everybody last week. The first report is Treasury Management Outturn for twenty-one twenty-two. Councillor Davidson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm councillor Chris Davidson, I'm the cabinet member for Fera Chelmsford, uh, which includes finance. Uh, the Treasury Management Outturn report is a report that council receives at this time every year, summarising how officers have managed our finances during the year two, the thirty-first of March just gone. Uh, there's nothing I particularly need to draw attention to in this report. Uh, it essentially says officers have done an excellent job looking after our money, ensuring we have the cash available when we need it and generating a very good level of income. Uh, the report is recommended by both the Treasury Management and Investment Subcommittee and the cabinet, uh, so I'll simply see whether there are any questions.
Have you got a second for all of that? Sorry, I should have stopped you before you started. Thank you to councillor Robinson. Are there any questions from anybody?
If there's no questions, I simply move that council endorsed the report, and I hope that council will also thank officers for the very professional job they do in managing our finances.
Yeah, are you happy to do that? To note the report? Thank you very much. Item seven point two, the capital programme. The next item is this capital programme update and outturn for twenty-one twenty-two. Councillor Davidson again, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is another report we receive at this time every year. The report provides an update on our capital spending programme. This is a programme that enables us to continue delivering all the services that our residents depend on: emptying their bins, maintaining their parks, alleviating homelessness, running our theatres and museum and many other vital services. We, as the Lib Dem group, have ambitious plans that are reflected, uh, in this council's capital programme: to modernise our theatres, to develop various sites we own, both providing more much-needed affordable housing and creating new communities that we can be proud of; to invest in decent temporary homes at lower cost for families that have found themselves homeless; to invest in Highlands House so that it can offer an even better experience to visitors; to ensure that we can deliver on our promise to plant one hundred and seventy-five thousand trees over ten years; and to make progress towards our target of making the city council net zero carbon by twenty thirty. We are converting our vehicle fleet to reduce and then eliminate reliance on fossil fuels, and I'm proud that all vehicles that we purchase now are electric or other ultra-low emissions such as hydrogen, except where there are genuine operational constraints that make these unsuitable or they're simply not available. And availability at the moment is an issue. Uh, as well as updating the costs of the existing capital programme, the report recommends adding two new schemes to our capital programme. They relate to the estimated sixty-seven million pound project to redesign the army and navy junction, enhance the park and rides, provide better options for cycling and walking, but in the immediate vicinity of the junction. We've been asked to provide four million pounds towards the cost of these works, but we've also allocated another one point five million pounds to make further improvements to cycling and walking, to extend beyond the immediate vicinity and make further progress towards our vision of a joined-up network of routes. Now Essex County Council will work with the City Council on this and our four million contribution is conditional on this happening. Both schemes will be funded from the contributions we collect from developers. So, subject to a second, I'll pause there for any questions.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yeah, both ways.
Thank you, councillor Davidson. We're councillor Thorpaps here, who would ask a question, but he's unfortunately got Covid, so I'm going to ask it on his behalf. The theatre modernisation project was initially budgeted at one million pounds and additional five hundred K was approved in November with a further one point two four six million approved in March following the return of tenders for the works. That's a hundred and seventy five percent increase from the initial budget of one million to the current budget of two point seven four six. Can assurances be given that the budget for the theatre refurbishment will not continue to climb, particularly given our residents are feeling the squeeze on household budgets and rightly expect this council to make every penny count?
Well, my sympathies to councillor Thorpaps, I hope he makes a speedy recovery and we look forward to seeing him again in the chamber. As the next item makes clear, we can't be sure about any of our capital programme in terms of the cost of building works because inflation is a serious risk that affects the council. What I don't think I can say is exactly what will happen, I can't predict the future. What I will say is we're determined to deliver this and provide theatres that the city is proud of and we are on track, I believe, to deliver that. But this is, the theatre's capital budget is something that's already been approved. So this is, I think, merely reporting that that's the current position.
Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is not a question, it's an observation. Particularly on something like page forty five, when you get down to an entry of naught point naught naught one million, that feels a little like one of those bistros where the price, things are priced at seven, nine and twelve. We can calculate thousands into millions, so it may be easier to go to thousands and fifteen thousand and eight thousand rather than go down to decimal places.
Thank you, councillor Massey. I'll take that as feedback on the way the report at that level of detail has been put together. I think part of the difficulty is that you are mixing projects, some of which have relatively small numbers such as those, others have much larger numbers attached to them. But nevertheless, we'll take that point away and consider it for future.
Thank you. Any other questions or indeed observations? Yes, councillor.
Councillor Davidson, you may or may not know that from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, I was the council disability champion for disabled children and adults. I've got twenty seven years behind me to do with disability. Please assure me with the sort of spending that's going on, it is not true that you are having a changing places outside of the theatre? Because I can tell you now that the two hundred and fifty eight students at Columbus College alone and school, when some in wheelchairs, paralysed, are going to have a lot of issues. Thank you.
I thank you for your comment, councillor Scott. I'm a former governor of Columbus School and College, so I entirely sympathise with that and the issue is not a financial one, it's entirely a practicability one in terms of the layout of the building, as I understand it, but councillor Goldman will respond.
Thank you councillor Davidson and through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for the question, councillor Scott. And you're absolutely right that we should be doing absolutely all that we can to help people with disabilities and make sure that we're as inclusive as possible, that is absolutely forefront of our mind and certainly something that we are pushing forwards. What you won't have known possibly, because you may not have been at previous meetings or you weren't at previous meetings and may not have watched the playback, is that this, we have discussed issues like this and I've answered various questions about it. The bottom line is that we are dealing with a building that is the size that it is, is the shape that it is and unfortunately fights at every single twist and turn. So changing places to be proper, to be the size that they need to be to qualify it as a changing place and to make sure that they are suitable as a changing place, need to be a certain size and they need to be accessible. And that makes it very, very difficult to fit into an existing building such as we have here with the constraints of the size of the building. So what we've been doing is liaising with the Chancellor, and I might get their names slightly wrong, the Disability Access Group, where to make sure that we are covering as much as we possibly can with them. And there's lots of things that we are doing to enhance disability access with the theatre refurbishment works. But unfortunately, there's no point denying it, that we cannot fit changing places inside the building. So we are working with the Disability Access Group to work out exactly what it looks like for relaxed performances with the theatre, to make sure that we have the best possible facilities within the constraints under which we're working. But I do share your aims and ambitions and it's certainly something that we're pushing for. Unfortunately, I can't magic up a bigger building, we've got the size that we've got and we have to work within those constraints. But thank you for the question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Right, okay.
If there are no other questions, then I'll move that the council approve increased budgets of four point four one nine million, approve budgets for the two new schemes and note the various other matters in the report.
Thank you, councillor Davidson. Can you please indicate by raising your hand whether you agree the recommendations by the council in the report? Okay. Any against? Thank you. Any dissensions at all? No, is that, okay, noted one. Okay, so that report is agreed. Thank you. Third financial item, the medium term on the cabinet, is a medium term financial strategy. Councillor Davidson will take us through it, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is the third of the finance reports we receive at this time every year. This report provides an update on our projected finances over the next period of nearly six years and it sets the context within which the budget setting for the next financial year will take place. It is quite usual this far out to have a gap between forecast spending and forecast income. Four years ago, in July twenty eighteen, Mr Mayor, you presented a forecast gap of one point three five million and this time last year, I presented a forecast gap of one point seven million. In each case, six months later, the budgets showed that each of those gaps had been closed. That's entirely normal. This year, the forecast gap is much larger at four point two million. I still expect to present a balanced budget in January, but there's no denying that there is a bigger challenge this year than in the average previous year. The fact is that our finances are very dependent on the income that we can generate ourselves. Council tax pays for about a quarter of our costs. Almost ninety pence in every pound of the council tax we collect is passed on to others, most of it to Essex County Council. We get very little from the government. What we get in terms of the general support largely comes via the business rates that we're allowed to keep. So we rely for seventy percent of our expenditure on the income that we generate through cautious investment of spare cash, rents on property we own, charges for using our leisure centres, car parks, theatre tickets, weddings at Highland's house and so on. Now, in a lockdown, that income fell, we established that conclusively. In a cost of living crisis, our income will also fall. Because inflation is forecast to be in double figures later this year, it's up to nine point four percent today, the highest level for forty years. Residents are seeing huge increases in energy bills, fuel prices at the pumps. Although they've come down very slightly, they're still not far off two pounds a litre. Food prices are going up by far more than we're used to. On the other hand, earnings, pensions, benefits are simply not keeping pace. People will spend less, that will affect our income. But our expenditure will rise. Energy costs have gone up by nine hundred thousand, fuel costs are up by three hundred thousand. As I mentioned a few moments ago, the prices of building materials are pushing up the costs of our capital programme. Every council is facing these pressures, we're not unique. We've managed our finances carefully, better than many other councils, but we can't ignore the storm that's coming. The government helped us to survive through the pandemic and we need the government to help again. Otherwise, all councils will have to stop delivering services that residents depend on. Unfortunately, we don't even know who will be in the government this autumn. The level of uncertainty is worrying. Meantime, this report plots a course to enable us to manage through this uncertainty. And I will pause there, I'm not going to go through the report in any great detail.
Okay, can I have a second please? Thank you. Any questions? Councillor Stew.
Thank you, councillor Davidson. The un earmarked reserves, which is compared with a, it states a target of nine million and it's currently around, going to be ten million by the end of this year, so we recognise it's more than target. How is, in terms of the trend, do you, I did try to do some research, but I couldn't see what the un earmarked reserve was at the end of last year and the end of the previous year. Do you happen to know those figures? Or i.e. what's the trend, how's it going?
The trend is quite difficult to talk about. We had to take various actions during lockdown because we lost seventeen million pounds of income. Not all of that was made up by the government, we were grateful for what we got, but they didn't completely replace the income that we lost, which was a disappointment given the promises that had been made. We took some actions that had the effect of boosting the reserves. The outturn report that was presented to Audit and Risk last month, the outturn report for the revenue budget in twenty one, twenty two, showed that we had significantly higher outcome than had been expecting. That's to say, income had been significantly affected, expenditure had been significantly affected, but overall we had an underspend, which is the right way round if you've, if you can choose between underspending and overspending. So some of that has been earmarked in this medium term financial strategy because of the uncertainty and the inflation risk that we expect. So some of that has gone into earmarked reserves. I think that the un earmarked reserves are the reserves that we have to rely on if things turn out much worse than we are projecting. So that's why the officers, relevant officers are requiring an un earmarked reserve balance of nine million as the target. What's the trend? The trend, as I say, is very hard to give you a straight answer to. The, we have been fortunate that we've got through the pandemic and last year and we're ahead of where we might otherwise have been, but that's probably the best answer I can give you. If I come up with another one, a better one, I'll write to you afterwards.
I was actually looking for the number of un earmarked reserve at the end of last year and the year before and the year before. So I'd appreciate if you could, I did some research, I couldn't find it, to be honest.
I'm happy to write to you afterwards with those numbers specifically.
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions? Is there a hand right at the back? Sorry, no. Scratching your nose perhaps? Okay, no other questions. Can we have a second by the way? I never get a chance to interrupt you once you get going.
We did.
Okay, all right, fine.
That might be a third though.
Yeah. On that basis, if there's no other questions.
I'll move that council approve the approach set out in the report, please.
Thank you. Can you please indicate by raising your hand whether you agree to the recommendations to the council? Thank you. Those against? Or disagree? Any abstentions? Thank you. The report is agreed. Okay, item number eight, reports from the leader of the council. There are two reports from the leader of the council under item eight. The first is on the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. It was considered by the cabinet on the twelfth of July and its recommendation was notified to you last week. Councillor Robinson, could you introduce the report, please?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. As the leader of the council, I'm presenting this report which relates to the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. This is a fund created by the government to, in an attempt to replace, but not completely, the money that we used to get from the European Union Regional Development Fund. So the recommendations on this report at the top of page two, obviously recommendation three was to cabinet, so recommendations one, two and four are put before you this evening. The officers, there was an officer working group that has looked right across the council and worked with a number of partners to come up with some proposals for spending the money that's being allocated to the council, which is just over one point one million pounds to be spread over three years. So it's not a massive amount of money, it's obviously substantial, but not. And that is, the breakdown over the years is set out at the bottom of page two. And you can see at the top of the next page, three, that it's a mix of revenue mostly, but also some capital expenditure. And this council has to draw up the plan, so this has been devolved to district council level. And we took this report to the One Chelmsford Board, which met Friday before last and that is where all the statutory sector partners sit round the table and the voluntary sector and business and so on. And the One Chelmsford Board looked at that, considered it and endorsed it. And so they, and they, we are required to consult with partners, so they have endorsed that report that's before you this evening. Moving on to the detail of the proposals, you will, you'll see on pages nine, ten and eleven of the report that there is some detailed headings and these are all set by the government. And so we have to allocate money against those headings, which you can see starts with E one and runs through on to the next couple of pages. So that, those headings are set for us by the government and we have to decide which of those headings we are going to allocate some of the money against. Obviously, there's a lot of headings, a lot of potential headings. We can't spend it on every single heading because otherwise we'd be spending very little on any one. You will note that, that a couple of the more substantial projects on there reflect some of the things which we think are priorities. For example, supporting the development of skills particularly amongst younger people, supporting the growth of local businesses and something that we're particularly keen to see is the growth of an innovation hub, working with local business to support small high-tech start-up companies, which is something that we've been working on and we'll be able to use this money to take that project further forward. There's also a significant sum of money to work with the voluntary sector and to grow local voluntary sports and to address health inequalities. And that last sum of money will be shared and spent in conjunction with money allocated by the local health service through the new integrated care partnership, which was launched on the first of July. And we think there's a real opportunity there to work between health and local government to address health inequalities. And although Chelmsford is generally regarded as a fairly well-off area, there are substantial, significant pockets of deprivation around the district where the gap between rich and poor and the gap in life expectancy is quite substantial. And we hope to, obviously we can't do anything overnight or even over a couple of years, but this is the start of some really important work and which is all part of the government's levelling up agenda. So the financial items are set out on nine, ten and eleven and then the projects are described in a bit more detail on twelve and thirteen. And so I put the report and the recommendations to council and I'll take any questions.
Can we have a second to first, please? Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, in which case I'll move the report.
Thank you very much. Can you please indicate by raising your hand whether you agree the recommendation to the proposed allocation of the funding? Thank you. Are there any against? Any abstentions? No? This report is agreed, thank you very much. Item eight point two, membership of the Chelmsford Policy Board. It's on a proposed change to the membership of the Chelmsford Policy Board. Councillor Robinson please.
And thank you, yes, as, as set out on the report, to replace yourself, Mr Mayor, with councillor Thorpe perhaps on the board.
Thank you. A second. Thank you. Okay, please indicate by raising your hand whether you agree the recommendation in the report? This report's agreed. Anybody against? Anybody abstained? No? Thank you very much. Annual report of the Audit and Risk Committee. Item nine is the annual report of the Audit and Risk Committee for twenty one, twenty two, which will be introduced by councillor Walsh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Audit and Risk Committee recently agreed its annual report, which full councillor tonight asked to approve for publication. The annual report details various areas, including its work programme for two thousand and twenty one, twenty two, the terms of reference and the audit charter and future work for two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. During the year two thousand and twenty one to twenty two, the committee met three times, considering matters including the revenue and capital outruns, modern slavery, procurement and sourcing activities. For the twenty to twenty one accounts, updates from the external auditors and the internal audit plan. I would like to thank the officers and committee members who have supported the work of this committee. I'm happy to answer any questions and then would recommend that the council approves this annual report. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Walsh. Very comprehensive report. Okay, we're asked to note the report. Are we all happy with that? Thank you very much. Item ten, the annual report of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Next item is, is exactly what I've just said for twenty one, twenty two, and will be introduced by councillor Richard Polter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a second as well? Sorry, I'm catching up.
I've got a second behind me.
Yes, happy to second it, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
As in previous years, the Overview and Scrutiny Committee have produced an annual report, which full councillor asked to approve for publication. The annual report covers the statutory provisions the committee works under, its terms of reference and the previous and current membership. The report also details the work undertaken in twenty twenty one, twenty two, which included updates from cabinet members and performance reviews of individual service areas. Looking forward to the next ten months, the committee invite all members of council to put forward suggestions either to my vice chairman councillor Young or myself of any aspect of the council's services which they would like the committee to review. I would like to thank all committee members for their contributions and my predecessor, Mr Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome.
And also to Daniel Bird for his help and advice. I'm happy to answer any questions and then recommends that the council approves this annual report. Thank you.
Are there any questions? No? We're asked to note this report. Are you all happy to do that? Thank you. General item eleven, it's a report from the Governance Committee on Proposed Amendments to the Constitution. It will be introduced by councillor Robinson in the absence of councillor Ayers. Thank you councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, yeah. So there are a number of relatively minor amendments which are being proposed, which have been through the Constitutional Working Group and the mayoral working group. There are three areas, as you've seen from the agenda circulated, some general procedural amendments and the revised financial rules and a tidying up of the mayoralty rules. And so I will move all, all three on block and take any questions.
Did we get a second there? Sorry, I'm just, thank you. Any questions? Comments, otherwise? Yes councillor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think any change that seeks to dilute voices is not democratic and I ask the liberal democratic administration that in general amendments two point two, is this your initiative or driven by officers? Does this administration agree that open debate in full view of the public creates a fairer and more democratic society? How is reducing opportunities fair on minority groups? And how is this a step forward for the public? What is deemed fair for a majority party? Why is that not implemented for all? The change two point two has been recommended due to more groups being formed within this council. It's clear we have diversity amongst us and something that I think makes life and politics quite interesting and I would encourage all to make a little time for difference. But according to the House of Commons library, less than one million UK residents are members of political parties and I could easily argue that you are all minorities and the lack of transparency and the willingness to listen is however much you disagree with that point of view, is what turns the public away from politics. I would like to propose that all groups, including the minorities, get the same opportunity to respond to this administration and that we remove point two point two. However you justify this change, I think it's a really sad step that an administration that brands themselves as democratic wants to silence the minorities. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Daden.
Thank you councillor Daden for your question. I mean, you, you didn't, you weren't at the cabinet meeting when you could have been and any other members of the, who are independent members could have been, but only one of the five of you took the opportunity to attend the cabinet meeting, kind of illustrating the point of the amendment, which was nobody is prevented from attending cabinet, everybody who attends cabinet has the right to ask a question. And there's indeed, all members of the council, all fifty seven members of the council can attend cabinet if they wish to. The purpose of this amendment was, is to clarify the rights of groups and since the independent members are now split into three separate groups, having been one group after the election and are now in three separate fractions, only representing two out of fifty seven members of the council. And so this is the, a minor, a relatively minor amendment and doesn't do what you would suggest it would, would do. It doesn't remove rights to speak, it, it reduces the number of spoke, official spokespeople. I do think it would be a little odd if there were more opposition spokespeople than there are members of the cabinet. There will be anyway in that there will be, there are five shadows from the conservative group and to add another five, so basically making all independents spokespeople, would actually mean there are more than more spokespeople, twice as many opposition spokespeople as they are actually members of the cabinet, which just seems a little odd. But as I say, this isn't about stopping people speaking, this is about just the administrative recognising of spokespeople. And as I said in answer to councillor Bentley at the cabinet meeting, there's plenty of time to address what happens next year, after next year's election, but this just reflects the current reality of the way the council is organised in that the five independent members are in, in three separate arrangements. So unless there are any other questions, I'll move the recommendation.
Councillor Highland?
Thank you, ma'am. So democracy is about cooperation, getting to the right decisions with a collective input and understanding. The illiberal principles shown here of restricting the freedom of thought, behaviour and free speech should be, in my eyes, be a decision you would wish not to support. Convention as it may be, is unjust, unfair and does not benefit smaller groups or indeed individual councillors. Can I ask, is this a lawful act to restrict contributions from elected members?
And thank you councillor Highland. I, I really apologise. I don't think you actually listened to what I just said. Every single member of the council can attend cabinet and ask questions. So I really can't, you know, I don't really see what the problem is. It is just about whether groups have official spokespeople or not. And the reality is, you're a member of a group which only has two members of the council out of fifty seven and the main opposition group has twenty two. So perhaps they should have ten times as many. I mean, I, you know, that would be a bit odd as well, but. I think, as I said, there's nothing to stop you answering questions at cabinet or full council. Please, and, and I can see that, you know, you're taking full advantage of that this evening. Can we?
I'm afraid you can't ask another question.
Oh.
Sorry, but not my rules.
Aris-ma-case then.
I'm not supposed to get involved, but I can see two differences to the understanding of what's going on. One is the makeup of who is represented to, to appear on these individual meetings and what actually happens at the meetings. All fifty seven councillors are eligible to go to any of the meetings, whatever their colour hat or hat that they don't wear. In terms of the constitution of who represents the people on these meetings, and I'm not taking sides, I'm just stating the obvious, it's ruled by a calculated set of regulations which Mr Mayfield, I'm hoping to God that he didn't make them up, but they're very complicated and most people leave them for him to work out. They're fairly straightforward based on the formula of how many people represent each party, but it does not preclude anybody from actually coming to any of the meetings. Sorry, that's all I can say. On that basis, please indicate by raising your hand whether you agree to the recommendations in the report? And against? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. This report is agreed. Item number twelve, Model Code of Conduct for councillors. Councillor Robinson will also take us through the next report, which recommends the adoption of the Model Code of Conduct for members.
And thank you, Mr Mayor, yes.
And your second, sorry? Okay, I'll get in here.
The, the, as you can see from the report, the, the Local Government Association has been discussing for some time that the idea that all councils should have the same code of conduct to avoid any confusion when councillors sit on one or two or, sorry, two or three different councils and might be subject to slightly different codes of conduct and, and therefore to avoid any inadvertent breaches of the code of conduct where something might be allowed at one council and isn't allowed at another council. So the Local Government Association is recommending to all, all councils that they should adopt this Model Code of Conduct and, and we're also suggesting that all of the town and parish councils in the district should be recommended to adopt it as well. So those are the two recommendations.
Thank you councillor Robinson. Any questions? Councillor Steele, followed by councillor.
So, yeah, thank you councillor Robinson. An observation really, although I must say, I do welcome, as a triple hatter, I do welcome a single code of conduct on all, on all three, three councils. It's interesting that one of the, one of the changes that may be slightly subtle, but these people ought to be aware of, is that the, the situation on gifts, that we used to have a situation where if you received or accepted a gift over fifty pounds, that you had to declare it, but now by adapting this, you have to actually declare if you are offered a gift over fifty pounds, if you decline it. Doesn't say what you, what you can do if you just ignore it, because it does say you've got to decline it. But literally, it does, I think councillors ought to note that if, and we did see some emails coming in that potentially could offer gifts and you might just miss them and you're supposed to, you're supposed to register it.
And thank you councillor Steele for drawing that to members' attention. I think that's, you know, it's a significant but important change because the mere offering of a gift might give the perception of attempted influence, but I know officers will address that in the training that they've organised, which is coming up shortly, that members will have the chance to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've looked through this carefully and I'm in complete agreement with it. I think it's entirely sensible, it should be adopted by all levels of council so that all members, wherever they sit, have a common view and a common reporting process. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Councillor.
Roberts is the name you're looking for, Mr Mayor.
I beg your pardon?
Roberts is the name you're looking for.
I wasn't looking for the name.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I've just, just, just checking, clarification, I assume that we, assuming we make this decision, we are going to notify the, all the parishes and town council of that decision because while some of them are represented here tonight, they're possibly not all represented and some of them are probably too far away for the internet. So please can you make sure everybody knows? Thank you.
I'm sure the internet's reached Southwood and Ferris. Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm sure the officers will do that. Thank you.
Can I ask the Bonnington Officer to report on that as well, please?
The only thing I was going to add is I have actually got a meeting scheduled with parish clerks later this week, so they will be hearing it hot off the press. But I have been in email contact with all the clerks anyway, so yes, I absolutely will be in touch with them.
Okay, any other comments? Questions?
In which case I move the recommendations.
Thank you. Okay, please indicate by raising your hand whether you agree to the recommendations in the report? Any against? Dissensions? No, the report is agreed. Thank you. General item thirteen, interesting one, notion of motion. Final item on the agenda is a notice of motion on a declaration councils have been asked to make on fair tax. It will be moved by councillor Highland and seconded by councillor Daden. Councillor Highland please.
Mr Mayor and fellow councillors, I'd like to propose the motion I've put before you this evening. Like this motion, my stated aims are to encourage and celebrate responsible tax conduct. Tax contributions are a key part of the positive social and economic impact made by business, helping the communities in which they operate to deliver value for public services and to build the infrastructure that allows businesses, residents and our city to thrive. The Fair Tax Declaration and the Fair Tax Mark seeks to encourage and recognise businesses that pay the right amount of corporate income tax at the right time in the right place. I believe that businesses that pay their taxes willingly, fairly and transparently should be celebrated and rewarded in trust for future procurement considerations. I believe that the businesses that pay their tax, oh, by, by signing up to the Fair Tax Declaration, Chelmsford City Council will show how to lead by example. Everyone knows, everybody needs to pay their fair share, especially now and when the public is under such intense pressure, the cost of living crisis and the challenges this presents to the maintenance of crucial frontline services and of course, our city council's budget as mentioned tonight. Local government has a proud history of standing up for responsible conduct, ranging from the living wage to fair trade. Fair tax is no different. This is right for our city, our businesses and our residents. There are two threads throughout the motion that was tabled and I ask Chelmsford City councils to consider this evening. One, that they lead by example and two, they think about ethical procurement. And there are two asks from the motion, that this council supports making the Fair Tax Declaration, that this council seeks to champion Fair Tax Mark. As social enterprises and cooperatives have been early pioneers of the Fair Tax Mark and fit especially well with the pursuit of social value in public procurement, councillors across the UK work hard to serve their local communities and help direct the delivery of essential public services. By signing up to the councils for Fair Tax Declaration, this council can demonstrate alignment to their values and encourage responsible tax practice. Significant recent polling has found that two thirds of people, sixty six percent, believe government and local councils should at least consider a company's ethics and how they pay their tax, as well as. pay their tax, as well as value for money and quality of services they provide when awarding contracts to companies. By signing the Fair Tax Declaration, we are seeking to lead by example. Everyone needs to pay their fair share of tax, especially now when public spending is under such immense, intense pressure, and we need to maintain public services to help people who are suffering from the cost of local, of living crisis. As a council with a proud track record of doing the right thing, promoting the payment of tax strengthens that commitment to fairness, equality and social justice. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Daden, do you want to second the motion at this point?
Yes, I would like to second the motion. I'm a firm supporter of carrot rather than a stick, which in essence is this motion. At a time when average residents are facing greater financial strain, this responsible motion proposes this council consciously associates and prefers companies that will take initiatives to pay appropriate and fair tax, rather than those indulging in steps to avoid such financial inconveniences. Using our influence to encourage what's best for our city may be the first step to making tax avoidance socially unacceptable, and I sincerely hope all members will support a well-thought-through motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, I understand that councillor Davidson is then going to move an amendment to the motion. I understand also that councillor Highland has agreed already to accept it. The procedure, in my eyes, will therefore be councillor Davidson will move the amendment, you will ask whether it's, I will ask where it's seconded, councillor Murray Goldman will do that, I apologise, and can either speak at that point or reserve till later. I can then ask councillor Highland whether he accepts the amendment, he confirms that he does and so on and so forth. Do you want to move your amendment councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I propose to move my amendment and speak to the motion and the amended motion all in one go, if that's acceptable, thank you. First of all, I'd just like to explain my personal position in relation to this agenda item. I was at HM Revenue and Customs for many years, with much of my career spent combating corporate tax avoidance. After I left HMRC, I worked at KPMG giving tax advice to clients, some of whom were multinationals, and I left KPMG in 2020, but in my entry in the Register of Business Interests, I've recorded that I still advise one multinational. So this is fairly close to things that I know about. I've consulted with a monitoring officer and accepted her advice that I did not need to disclose this as an interest, but I think it's important to be transparent. So I'd like to thank councillor Highland for putting down the motion. It's an important issue that affects every single person in this country. It's about fairness, and that's something that's very much what Liberal Democrats stand for. Fairness in the distribution of the taxation, of the liability for taxation, and it's that tax that pays for public services that citizens need government at all levels to provide. We'd all like tax to be a bit lower, and some people recently have been making rather rash promises that it can be much lower, but the truth is that we also want more to be spent on public services, more on health services, more on defence so we can stand together with other countries and against those that threaten world peace, more on filling potholes and repairing our pavements, more on emptying our bins, recycling our waste properly, maintaining our parks, providing affordable housing for the homeless or for overcrowded residents, more on saving the planet by decarbonising and reaching net zero, and more on many other services. Public services like these have to be paid for. Most of us are happy to pay for them, but frankly, we are less happy if we think other people are avoiding paying their fair share. So as Liberal Democrats, we're appalled at the level of profit shifting and other devices that some multinationals have used to avoid paying a fair amount of tax in the UK. We want to encourage businesses to thrive and innovate, creating well-paid jobs. Freeloading by a minority is despicable, it amounts to unfair competition that disadvantages the majority that want to play by the rules. That's why this motion raises such an important point. But the motion as tabled overreaches in what it proposes that the City Council should do. Much of it's already being done and will continue to be done. Yes, we already ensure that IR thirty-five is implemented robustly. Yes, we already lead by example and demonstrate good practice in our tax conduct. Yes, we pay the full amount of stamp duty when we purchase land and property. But this motion's about corporate tax avoidance, about multinational companies engaging in profit shifting, that's using clever accounting techniques, so profits that really are made in the UK and elsewhere disappear and may reappear somewhere else and attract far less tax. Tax avoidance like this is HMRC's responsibility, they should be dealing with it, and it's for government ministers to make sure that HMRC has the legislation and the resources they need to enable them to do so. Investigating it is a hugely complex task. It's very easy to point out that a multinational has a subsidiary in a tax haven, but it's much harder to say whether it's tax avoidance, rather than, for example, running a legitimate business in a sunny holiday island. So as much as I agree that the City Council should not use suppliers that use not-for-profit structures inappropriately, how can our officers be expected to decide whether a structure is or isn't appropriate? That requires highly specialist skillset, one that the City Council does not and cannot employ our staff to have. Our staff are fantastic, let's be clear, but we can't expect them to have these skills. So we must be careful not to sign up to do things that our officers are not equipped to do. So the amendment I've tabled to councillor Highland's motion, and I'm grateful for the discussions we've had and for his acceptance that we must only commit to what we can realistically achieve. The amendment's aimed at deleting the commitments that would cause the difficulties I've outlined. It also contains an additional action, instructing me to write to the government on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Chelmsford to express our concern at the continuing level of corporate tax avoidance and to press the Chancellor to stamp it out. With these amendments, I can fully support the motion. As amended, expresses our shared belief that everyone should pay a fair amount of tax, a fair share of the tax that's needed to fund public services, that no one's above the law and no one should be allowed to slip through gaps in the law either. Now, I believe that we will be accredited by the Fair Tax Campaign if we adopt the motion as amended, and I can say happily that I regard that as great news. So I'd like to say thank you to councillor Highland, and just come back to the two points he made, the two key things, lead by example and ethical procurement. I've confirmed that we are happy to lead by example, we believe we do lead by example, and we also produced the first, I think, for this council procurement strategy recently, which essentially, I would paraphrase as being ethical procurement. So I think we already meet both those tests, but I think that the motion is something that we should support because it will demonstrate that, those points.
Thank you, councillor Davidson. Councillor Highland, do you accept the amendment as stated?
So can I just take a moment to thank councillor Davidson and officers for the discussions that we've had and who have used their knowledge, their insight and their foresight to scrutinise the Fair Tax Motion and shape a workable solution which achieves my stated aim to encourage and celebrate responsible tax conduct. I'd also like to acknowledge the Fair Tax Foundation who prompted my action on this motion and promote the Fair Tax Mark, the gold standard of responsible tax conduct. I am happy to accept the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. As such, therefore, the amended motion now becomes the substantive motion for debate. Sorry, councillor Knight?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Could I ask anybody who wishes to answer the question, what percentage of cost that this council has is actually given to those sorts of corporations that hide money from corporation tax? And most of those are large American multinationals, and I can think of Microsoft being one, for example, but it would be difficult to get out of that. So that's the responsibility that I think councillor Davidson alluded to, which we're passing the responsibility on to the council, whereas turning it round, how many of individuals are on Facebook and Twitter and Google and Amazon and the rest of them who we know don't pay corporation tax and will happily have engaged with them all day today and will do it all day tomorrow? Those are the questions, if anybody would like...
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think the problem with councillor Knight's question is that it requires us to know which organisations that we deal with are engaged in profit shifting and other forms of corporate tax avoidance, and I've just explained why it's difficult to have the answer to that question. So I don't think we can answer that question. I would also caution against making what may be statements that could result in litigation. So I am being careful what I say about certain organisations.
I understand. Councillor Polter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm somewhat of a dilemma over on this, because I agree with the sentiments of the motion and I agree with the sentiments of the amendment, and I speak to both. I'm fully in favour of promoting fair tax and I condemn tax avoidance in all its forms. But the motion and the amendment go beyond that, they offer specific advice to government, and the motion has already, as previously drafted, proposed difficulties which we've heard about, IR thirty-five, so it does put obligations upon our officers. I've also exchanged emails with councillor Highlands, and we're both aware of each other's views, but in view of my dilemma and wanting to jump with both feats in both directions at the same time, we will abstain. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Councillor Clark?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For someone who's slightly libertarian in their views, I find this a bit of a struggle to get my head around, how are you going to monitor this? Obviously, tax avoidance is big business because a lot of companies make money which they probably don't pay tax on, telling companies how not to pay tax. Tax evasion, of course, is illegal, but I don't know how you're going to be able to prove that a company has paid a fair tax bill at the end of a year without scrutinising it yourself. You're taking the words of people who fill in the tax returns for these companies, thinking that they've paid their tax bill. So I don't actually understand the point of, yeah, we all want to pay tax, we all want to see people paying tax, but companies, some of which have been mentioned, and I'm not going to mention them myself, but are accused of not paying their fair share, they will argue that they invest that money elsewhere and put it to good use. I don't know whether you can criticise them for that, but I can't support this, I'll have to abstain, because I'm not saying that tax avoidance is a good thing, but I don't know how you can monitor it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? No? Sorry, councillor Goldman?
Yeah, yes, Mr...
I've got a big screen in front of me.
I thought you were going to call on me to formally second the amendment, which I never got my turn, so if I could speak now, that'd be fantastic.
You can indeed.
I'll keep this brief, and I appreciate the issues that members opposite have raised, but I just wanted to, just to say that it's really important that we support the principle of this, and I would like to thank councillor Highland for bringing this to us. Where we can agree with each other, I like to think that we do agree with each other, and we take the opportunity to work together and to cooperate, and there's that word that he used in a debate earlier about cooperation, and I think this does demonstrate that we do cooperate where we can cooperate, and where there are differences of opinion, we like to discuss them and come to a solution, which I think is what we've come to here, and I'm very, very pleased to see that, so I wanted to say that. As Liberal Democrats, we do believe in social justice, and it is only by working together and everybody paying their fair share that we can achieve that social justice, and that's why I believe this is an important motion. But we do have to recognise the powers of the council, and members, you know, rightly raise questions about making sure that we are not committing the council to things that we cannot achieve, which is what the amendment seeks to do. Councillor Polter raised the issue of instruct, I think he was referring to the bit where we said we wanted to instruct the cabinet member for fairer chancellor to write to Her Majesty's government on this subject. I don't know why that would be an issue, because the only reason why it would be an issue is if we think that the government is doing all it can to tackle tax avoidance, and I am pretty sure that we all agree actually that the government isn't doing all that it can. It may just be that there's some party politics getting in the way of this, which is a shame, because I think we do need to write to the government about this and express our concern as councils, because we're supposed to represent the local people's interests, and that is exactly what we should be doing regardless of the colour of the political party that is running the council or running the government. We should be beyond that. But finally, I just wanted to say, this is about pragmatism, we're doing what we can do without overreaching, but we are cooperating as much as we possibly can do. So thank you again councillor Highland for bringing this, and I hope that this motion will be supported. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Goldman. Before I take the vote, councillor Highland, you have the right to reply before the vote is taken.
I give my thanks to councillor Davidson and their officers, so thank you.
You did have another one. Okay. Please indicate by raising your hand whether you agree to the substantive motion, please. Right, anybody against? Anybody abstaining? Thank you very much. The substantive motion is agreed. Okay, we now have some urgent business. We have an additional item of urgent business on the proposed purchase of a property, which all members were informed about yesterday. I have agreed to accept it on the grounds that a delay in making a decision would mean that the council may miss the opportunity to purchase the property in question. The report contains exempt information, and therefore we should unfortunately exclude the public from the meeting. I therefore move that the public be excluded from the meeting during consideration of item fourteen, as it contains exempt information within paragraph three...